And the first thing we need to do is to read the closed meeting certification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council members certify by record vote that to best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in a motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, would you take the vote?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and then we will now call the business session, the 6:30 business session, back to order. Having established that we have a quorum, we will begin the business meeting with a moment of silence. As we take our moment of silence, let us take a moment to reflect on the tragedy in Buffalo. We stand against those acts of domestic terrorism, of, we stand against the act of domestic terrorism against marginalized communities, and our hearts are heavy for those in Buffalo, as well as anyone who is feeling the fear this act of terrorism evokes. We acknowledge that Black Lives Matter and are valued, and so let's, let's just take a moment to reflect on all that this means for us here in Charlottesville. Thank you. There will be plenty of other opportunities to continue those reflections on our own time later on. Counselors, are there any announcements?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. I'd like to announce that community activists, Mr. Alexander will be launching a new program. It's called Yogo in the Veil, and it's going to, a creative campaign to interrupt the culture of violence via guns, road rage, or workplace violence, and certainly prevalent and needed during this time. He's going to have a press briefing tomorrow, May 17th, at 10:00 a.m. at the City Hall Ting Pavilion, again at 10:00 a.m., and I encourage those who are available to, to attend that. And also, I'd like to note that this is National Police Week, and we would like to thank the police for their service to the community and for protecting us. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge that as well. Thank them so much for their service.
Thank you.
Mayor, one quick announcement. Just wanted to acknowledge that last night, Virginia's COVID tenant protections and new applications for the Virginia Rent Relief Program ended, but wanted to call attention to the fact that Charlottesville's local pathways and emergency funds are still operating, and people, if they individually need to reach it, or know someone who does, can contact those fund hotlines at 833-524-2904, or 434-373-0930 for the Spanish language line. And then finally, Legal Aid Justice Center is also operating a rent relief helpline, which can be reached at 434-326-4305.
Any other announcements, counselors? Okay, so recognitions and proclamations. We have a mayoral proclamation. May 2022 is Mental Health Awareness Month, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation, and approximately nine and a half percent of American adults age 18 and over will suffer from a depressive illness, major depression, bipolar disorder, or dysthymia each year, and whereas one in five individuals in our community are currently living with a mental health challenge, and whereas everyone experiences times of difficulty and stress in their lives and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times, and whereas we seek to address the disproportionate unmet mental health needs of Black and Brown community members, and whereas engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are as effective at reducing the burden of mental illnesses as they are at reducing the burden of other chronic health conditions, and whereas with effective treatment, all individuals with mental illnesses, even serious mental illnesses, can make progress toward recovery and lead full, productive lives, and whereas in Charlottesville, we are actively working to create a community best able to meet the needs of its members living with mental health challenges by centering the voices of residents with lived experience, embracing trauma-informed and person-centered practices, and dismantling discriminatory policies, and whereas by setting aside a month to acknowledge the impact of mental health on community well-being, thus increasing awareness and understanding of available behavioral health resources in our community and achieving positive outcomes for individuals experiencing a behavioral health crisis. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Charlottesville does hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month, calling upon residents, government agencies, healthcare providers, public and private institutions, including businesses and schools in Charlottesville, to recommit to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health to the steps that our citizens can take to protect their mental health and appropriate response to mental health crises, signed and sealed the 16th day of May 2022. Lloyd Snook, Mayor. Sue Hess, to be speaking, in case to officially receive this?
Yes, I have a client who's gonna...
Come on up. Yes, please.
Ms. Daniels?
Did you want to tell us something?
Well, just that I'm thankful and grateful to receive it. This has been a struggle of mine for quite some time. Really didn't acknowledge it, but pretty much for 30 years of my life, have had severe depression and anxiety, to which I didn't really speak or get help for it until my divorce, which was brought on from years' worth of verbal, physical, and mental abuse from my spouse, along with some trauma. My sister was murdered, and so I guess all of that together brought me to Ms. Sue Hess and Partners for Mental Health, along with the Women's Initiative, to which I still use today. I've overcome a lot of my depression, but the anxiety is a day-to-day battle that I'm still going through. But never did I know I had this much support, and so many people willing to help, and so for that, I'm so grateful.
Well, Charlottesville is fortunate to have a number of people who are willing to help. Lots of needs, but lots of folks willing to help. So, we come down and give you...
I'm trying to get a picture, so I can, I'll send it to see, okay, you got it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Okay, are there any additional items for recognition at this time? If not, then we're ready for the consent agenda. Ms. Thomas, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Consent agenda, number three, minutes, March 21st, meeting. Four, resolution, appropriating additional funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services for the VIEW program, $38,025, second reading. Five, resolution, appropriating funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services for Child Abuse Prevention Month, $1,000, second reading. Six, resolution, appropriating supplemental funding received from Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development for HOPWA, housing opportunities for people with AIDS HIV, $10,098, first of two readings. Seven, resolution, appropriating anticipated supplemental grant funding from the Virginia Housing Solutions Program to be used for contracted services, $141,000, first of two readings. Eight, resolution, appropriating funding received from the United Way as reimbursement of community resource hotline staff costs, $35,311.50, first of two readings.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. We will now take public comment regarding items on the consent agenda, as that they were just read, just read by the clerk. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. In the Zoom webinar, you may select the raise hand option to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak on the consent agenda, you may press star nine, and let me emphasize, the, the thing that you would have signed up for in advance, this is not the time. That's going to be in a few minutes. So if you want to speak on one of those six items that was just read, either raise your hand, press star nine. Is there anyone in council chambers who wants to speak on one of those six issues? Seeing no one, Mr. Dillhund, do we have anybody online interested?
Mayor Snook, I see no hands at this time.
All right, so I'll close that portion of the public hearing. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move that we can adopt the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments, counsel? Ms. Thomas, will you take the vote?
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes five, nothing, to adopt the consent agenda. Is there a report from the city manager's office?
Not tonight, sir. We give our city manager's office report at the first meeting of council every month, so we, we report at the last meeting, and we have nothing to report tonight.
All right. Now, Community Matters is next up. There are five pre-registered speakers, leaving 11 slots for additional speakers on Community Matters. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. There will be an additional public comments section at the end of the meeting. We will now open the floor to pre-registered speakers. Others wishing to speak may select the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar to be placed in the speaker queue. If you have joined by phone and wish to speak during Community Matters, you may press star nine. In-person attendees may raise your hands to be recognized, and we will alternate in-person with virtual speakers. First speaker that I've got here is Oleg Glushkov. Is he available?
Good evening.
Mr. Glushkov?
Yes.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Right. My name is Oleg. I am a senior at Monticello High School. In government class, my group and I are working on a project where we conduct research on a local, ongoing public policy issue. We decided to examine in greater detail the issue of affordable housing and community gardens. In the last couple of years, the expansion of affordable housing in the city of Charlottesville started forcing a number of large community gardens providing tens of thousands of pounds of food to people in need to close down, with the intention of constructing more subsidized housing units in their place. There is a dilemma here, because both affordable housing and community gardens provide necessary services for the people in need who live in subsidized housing. The residents depend on the subsidized housing for shelter they can afford, and on community gardens for the fresh food. If we favor building more affordable housing at the expense of community gardens, then we deprive more than 300 families or 950 Charlottesville residents of the fresh produce they currently receive from the community gardens managed by the Urban Agricultural Collective. The Urban Agricultural Collective grows around 20,000 pounds of fresh produce annually and shares it with around 300 families. In 2019, they lost two gardens in Charlottesville, including one at Friendship Court on Monticello Avenue, where construction of new subsidized housing is already underway. But at the same time, if we preserve all community gardens, there will be no available land remaining to construct new affordable housing. This is hardly possible, since according to a recent local study, there is a current need for more than 1,600 subsidized housing units just in Charlottesville, so we need more affordable housing. Both community gardens and affordable housing are vital, so the main question I think we need to find a solution to is how do we ensure that affordable housing and community gardens both continue to coexist in the face of decreasing availability of land? So as, as one possible solution, I would like to express strong support for the city council to eventually approve the Urban Agricultural Collective's initiative of receiving small amounts of growing land in city parks, Washington Park in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glushkov. Next speaker I've got is Brenda Brown Grooms by Zoom. Ms. Brown Grooms, are you with us?
I am.
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Brenda Brown Grooms. Pastor Liz Emery and Reverend Greg Moyer are there with you. We pastor, we pastor New Beginnings Christian Community in Charlottesville, Virginia. Two of our members live in a trailer owned by Mr. Steve Holzapfel and his sister Barbara Thompson. We have talked to everyone we can possibly try to talk to about getting them the help they need. Rajoka and Darko are members of our church. They were on the streets for several years before we met them. He has developmental issues, and she is mentally ill. They experienced war in the camps in their native Croatia, and they rent a room in one of Steve Holzapfel's trailers. On every occasion we can think of, the rent is, they, they pay their rent, which includes all utilities, but the electricity's off, the water's off, the heat's air off, the air conditioning has been off. Mrs. Marsetic and another person in the tent, in the, in the trailer are both bedridden. The water has been off, and so they've not been able to flush the toilets or to be washed after they soil themselves. Mr. Holzapfel collects $600 a month from each person in the trailer. When they complain about anything, he threatens to evict them immediately, and recently told Darko that he would have him evicted and put on the streets immediately if he carried this complaint any further. The Marsetics are horrified at the thought of living on the streets again, even with the black mold that covers the walls of the trailer, the holes in the living room and bathroom. Rajoka fell through the hole in the bathroom, and the EMT worker who came to take her to hospital fell through the hole in the floor. That's less horrible to them than the thought of being homeless again. Nurses and other medical personnel have declared war the place a biohazard and will no longer enter the trailer to see Mrs. Marsetic. Mr. Holzapfel has been ordered to build a raft to make it possible for her to get out, get in and out of the trailer. He has not. He will put the property in his sister's name and raise the trailer to the ground before he makes any improvements. We have complained to social services. We called Sue Moffitt, Todd Meiermeyer, Adult Protective Services, Rob Hall, the Police Department, Ashton Moley. I've put the, a notice on the city housing question board. We've talked to the Haven. We've talked with, given several notices to Carly on Your Side, and now Ben Anderson at the Daily Progress, and no one has responded, except for one, Mr. Kifana, who referred me to a number of the people whom I've named. Not heard a word from any of them. So we want to know at this point, whose job is it in Charlottesville to stop unscrupulous landlords? Who helps sick, scared, mentally ill people in Charlottesville? Can it be that while this city struggles to find housing for Afghan refugees, it is virtually impossible to find decent, affordable housing for the poor who already live here? These people count on us to be their voices when they can't speak for themselves. Do we need to call Ben Jones or some other public utility to get this problem taken care of? We don't need it studied. These people have spent two summers and now two winters waiting for someone to act on their behalf. We need to know what's going to happen to these people. Are we going to allow Mr. Holzapfel and his, his sister to put these vulnerable people on the streets where we know there is no housing for them, while he continues to collect rent for them, and nothing is done for them? If I sound a bit upset, it is because I am. This is a beautiful city with an ugly underside. There is no reason for people in Charlottesville, Virginia, to live like this, and no one in this city do a thing about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown Grooms. Next, Elizabeth Emery?
Yes, I'm Dr. Elizabeth Emery, co-pastor with Reverend Brown Grooms of New Beginnings Christian Community, and I have some pictures for you of the place where they are staying. This is the ceiling, which is all warped and with falling down, and here's some of the cockroaches that are there. Here's the floor with a hole in it. Here is another part of the ceiling that is falling down, and I have other pictures. Here's the bathroom, which has the tile off of it and falling apart. And here's another part of one of the ceilings in the hallway, which is this way all the time, and when it rains, it literally rains inside their trailer. And we have tried the fire department, the police department, adult protective services, social services, even the hospital to help us, but no one will do anything for them. They are just condemned to live in this hellhole, where there are rats and cockroaches and mildew and water falling on them, and then Mr. Holzapfel routinely doesn't pay his electric or water bill. And so last week, he had the water turned off twice because he didn't pay the bill, and he's had the electricity turned off often because he's refused to pay the bill. And yet, the Marsetics have constantly paid their rent on time. They have been very cooperative. They have asked for help, but no one in this city seems to care. There's no tenants' rights here that we have found. We have even gone to the Neighborhood Action Group here, and no one can help us. They just keep referring us to somebody else. And so you are the court of last resorts. This is not generally a city council business to help out a tenant, but we are throwing up our hands. We cannot get anyone to help them, and they are absolutely desperate. Mrs. Marsetic weighs over 350 pounds, and she sits in her bed, and she cannot get out because there's no ramp, even though the fire department has gone to Mr. Holzapfel and told him that he must have a ramp so that she can escape in case of fire. He has refused to do anything about it. He's refused to make any repairs. He's refused to do anything to help anyone there. He's just going to be a slum landlord and take all their money, and if they raise any protest, he is threatening them with eviction, and we need to do something about that, and you are the court of last resorts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emery. Greg Moyer?
Good evening. Dr. Gregory Moyer, Associate Minister, New Beginnings Christian Community, and for several years, I lived in that trailer, until it became unbearable that I had to get out. I now live at 1128 East Market Street, so I'm a witness to the conditions of that place. Right now, as this TV program is being broadcast live, Darko and Rajoka are at home crying, because they had been threatened that if this proceeds to city councils or anywhere else, they would be immediately evicted, and I called them right before I came here and said, bring it on. The moment Steve Holzapfel approaches the house, I will call the police and have them not evicted. They lived two and a half years on the streets of Charlottesville. They're Croatian refugees. It's very, very sad that Charlottesville says they're such a progressive city, but I don't see progress when two people who were in a concentration camp in Croatia say their life there was better than where they're living right now. And Steve Holzapfel's response was, you should be glad you have a place to live. This is not progress. This is not what a progressive city should be talking about. It's, you can't call yourself a progressive city if you walk into the kitchen of a trailer and you can't distinguish the table from the cockroaches. You can't call yourself a progressive city if you walk into the bedrooms and you can't tell the white walls from the black mold. You can't call yourself a progressive city if you walk into the bathrooms and you can't tell the overflowing toilets from the water that's coming from the ceilings. And you can't call yourself a progressive city in allowing this stuff if you walk into the kitchen and you can't distinguish the tiles from the ground below. The fire department, there are no fire extinguishers in the house. There are no smoke detectors in the house, and I will promise this, somebody in that house is going to die. There's no fire escape. There's no way that two bedridden people can get out if there's an emergency. When the medical people and the EMTs say they can't come anymore because the conditions of the house are really bad, something needs to be done. We're hoping that bringing this to city council will do two things. Initiate the people who are responsible for this. Surely there has to be somebody in city government that's responsible to look into these things, and second of all, to make sure that these individuals are not evicted, because we're trying to do justice for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moyer. And we had had someone else on who has apparently withdrawn, so we're on to any new speakers? Has there been anybody else? I see, is there anybody else here in the room who is interested in speaking? Anybody online, Mr. Dillhund?
Yes, Mayor Snook. Our first raised hand will be Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you are on with counsel.
Good evening. I have a few things I want to cover tonight. First and foremost, I want to cover the request for you all to fund the Alexander Yogo thing. I just want to know, where are any of you five councils going to combat violence in this community? Because if you think cutting a check is going to help every time, and I hope y'all can hear me okay. If you think that cutting a check and giving money every time is going to combat the violence in this community, you're wrong. The DMC report once again reflects that Black people are more prone to being stopped by the police than any other race in the city. If we were to get a math, a, a statistics specialist or somebody that specializes in numbers, were Black people only making up 16% of the number of people in Charlottesville? The fact that we're stopped more by police, that says a lot, when this is a predominantly white community, number one. And number two, what are you all going to do to help with mental health, drug addiction? That's where you should be putting your money, and stop giving your money to individuals and people that you think are going to combat this stuff that don't specialize in any of this stuff. The next thing I want to talk about, I just want to talk about the affordable housing issue as well. This is a major issue here in Charlottesville. While we always say that we're going to create more affordable housing, every time one of you all run for a seat or reelection, you use affordable housing as a crutch, that that's what you're going to work on. It's time that you start really doing that, and stop just saying, oh, we gave Charlottesville Redevelopment Housing Authority X amount of money to combat the problem. That's not, we need more than that. And if you really want to combat the balance, the violence in the community, what you should do is provide them more money to have armed security in the neighborhoods. That's what you should do. Instead of putting this money into individual hands, you could get, the, the Black-owned security company that they were using, you could work out a deal or a partnership agreement with them. The last thing I want to touch on is Juan Diego. I know you're definitely pushing that school reconfiguration. There was an issue that just occurred at Beaufort, where a man walked up onto the premises and threatened a young girl by showing a knife. Now, while y'all will say this is one of the reasons why we need to do the school reconfiguration, no, this is one of the reasons why you need to revisit why your IT department is not doing their job, and why those cameras don't work inside Beaufort Middle School. That's unacceptable. You're paying hefty salaries for people in your IT department, and they can't even explain why these cameras aren't working. So it's not just the condition of the building, because when I was at Beaufort, we weren't going too far left, right, north, south, east, or west without teachers being around. So you have other issues to combat, more so than the condition of the school. The camera's not working is definitely a major one. The security and the safety net of the students, major one. That has nothing to do with the building, but everything to do with people and individuals. And I know you all haven't heard from me in a little while. You hate to see my name pop up, but I'm back and have a lot to discuss, and I look forward to meeting the new city manager here soon to address some of my concerns. Even though I haven't been on the meetings, I've definitely been engaged and very well-informed of what's going on. So I ask all five counselors, I hope that you all start doing something and walking in these communities and talking to the people that voted for you, that got you in those seats, so you can find out what it is that they need. Go do the work, because you do the work when you're, when you're asking for votes.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Next?
Mayor Snook, our next speaker will be Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you are on with counsel.
Thank you very much. I just...
I just have one issue, but now I have two real quickly to talk about. And thank you for this opportunity to bring it up. I just wondered if someone could check either with Parks and Rec or see what the plan is from the Historic Resources Committee in reference to that Vinegar Hill memorial plaque that had been attached to one of the concrete walls surrounding, I think, the tree area that had recently, just recently been cut down by the code building. I think that plaque has been traveling a lot over the past couple of years and was hoping that at some point, there would either be a plan for it or be reinstalled, or just to make sure that it is in a secure spot. I think the last time I heard, a couple of years ago, it was. So seeing that picture of trees being cut down in that little plot of land brought that back to my focus and just wanted to ask folks to kind of look into that and to see if there will be a plan forthcoming in reference to that plaque. Because there were a lot of people that were very interested in having that plaque placed and certainly advocated at the time for it. The second part of my response is in reference to the mother and son that are facing those horrible, horrible conditions by that slumlord, Steve Holsapple. I'm wondering if our Region 10 Community Services Board Housing Program there would have perhaps a voucher that this, you know, that they could use to perhaps access more habitable housing while that place paves in on itself and Holsapple can go down there and pick up the pieces of what's left. I know that they have several different programs at Region 10. I don't know, I'm just, you know, putting it out there. Perhaps it's, you know, an option that's already been explored, but I don't know. But I wanted to, you know, put that out there and also support what all three of these folks said about that family, that this city is progressive. It's ridiculous that folks have to live in circumstances like this. And I certainly hope if somebody from Legal Aid or Central Virginia Legal Aid is listening, that they'll look into this, you know, as far as him doing, you know, operating against the Landlord Tenet Act of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Anybody else?
Our next speaker is Shelby Edwards. Shelby, you are on with counsel.
Good evening. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Hello, my name is Shelby Marie Edwards. I'm the Executive Director of the Charlottesville Public Housing Association of Residents, also known as FAR. I'm a product of the Charlottesville Public City School System and a Charlottesville native. Our mission at FAR is to educate and empower low-income residents in the Charlottesville area. I would like to take this time to reiterate the concerns that Pastor Brenda Brown Grooms and Pastor Liz Emory have uplifted. It is so important that we have a city of Charlottesville that does a better job listening to low-income residents. And whether you are paying $35, $600, or $6,000 a month, we need to make sure that everybody in our city is living in conditions that are becoming of their humanity. The abhorrent conditions described are deplorable. I connected with Pastor Brenda Brown Grooms this evening, like, right after her comment. And I plan to follow up with them as well as that family because, again, FAR's mission is to educate and empower all low-income residents of Charlottesville. And so I personally am going to make sure that we get this moving. So I definitely thank y'all for bringing that to counsel. And counsel, I look forward to seeing how you support organizations such as FAR that continue to do this work. And I, like I said, I will keep my comments for tonight also very brief. But please, everyone on this council, make sure that we're all doing the work to support affordable housing. And when we say affordable, I don't just mean in the sense of you can afford it. Think about your neighbor when we're thinking about affordability, right? Let's think about the person who has zero income a month. They deserve to live in the city of Charlottesville, too. So as always, I thank you so much for the gift of your time. Please don't take my brevity or seemingly to be levity of my comment for anything being other than very, very serious. I appreciate all of you for your service to the residents of the city of Charlottesville. Let's talk to y'all soon. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards.
Next up, we have Ange Khan. Ange, you are on with counsel.
Hello. Yes, I am calling in tonight to discuss the housing choice vouchers or the emergency vouchers that have been returned or actually where folks had to turn them in because they were unable to acquire housing. I, one, I want to know, and the community needs to know, how many vouchers were turned in? When is that, when will they be available to community members? And then I also wanted to discuss the lottery process, which is very unfair if you, if you work in with unhoused individuals or are in, or in communication with folks, why that specific demographic was not chosen first. The lottery process is flawed, and not saying that those who received vouchers should not have. I'm just saying that we have a unhoused population here that's in crisis. And we absolutely need to be getting the vouchers to those folk. So if you could, I don't know if John is in attendance, but I would, we would like to know as a community where we can, one, locate these emergency vouchers for the folks that we are supporting or providing resources for, and also looking into changing that process from lottery to the most vulnerable populations. There are several, I can, I could, I'm not going to name folks, but I can tell you there is a large demographic, a large group of folks who need housing choice vouchers and need, they need rental subsidies. If there are folks who are holding on to these vouchers for whatever reason, I'm not sure of how, what that process is like, you know, as far as, you know, who has extra vouchers or emergency vouchers on hand. But I would ask that they free those vouchers up because we have folks who are living in hotels with children and sleeping in their cars, sleeping on the streets, sleeping in parks, some of which who may have income, some of which who may not have income. But we have an unhoused crisis in this city. And folks need these vouchers. So please, someone get in contact with CRHA and ask what to change the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Khan.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
Okay. So that is our final speaker for community matters. We will now move to the action items portion of the agenda. And the first action item, Ms. Chrissy Hamel is going to be presenting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel?
So I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yeah.
Just briefly, before we move on, I'm just, I am really concerned about the Franklin Street I was asking before I hadn't really heard of this. So I just want to just request staff to look into that today if possible, but definitely tomorrow, and do what they can to, you know, it was sad to hear that they did do some follow-up with staff and there was no feed, feedback or, you know, comment. So, Mr. Rogers, if you could, I'm sure you probably already were taking notes on that, but please, if you could look in that expeditiously, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Hamel?
Good evening, counsel. We are here tonight to talk to you about a bond resolution. The city is getting ready to engage in a bond sale. We are going out for, we're asking for your approval for approximately 20, maximum of up to $26 million in general obligation bonds to be sold to help fund projects that were previously approved in the city's CIP. We will be, these projects were approved in the '22 budget and back further. And we have met with the rating agencies to reconfirm our AAA bond rating. We met with both S&amp;P and Moody's last week. And we will be engaging in a sale, competitive sale, on June 5th. And we hope to hear within the next week or two on the confirmation of our AAA bond rating. And with that, that's all of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No.
So... Let's see, the vote that we need to take, it's a one reading, authorizing issuance and sale of general obligation bonds in an amount up to $26 million. Anybody have any questions or comments, or... Are we ready then to have a motion? Oh. Okay, is there anybody in the public here who would like to speak on the matter? I see nobody interested. Is there anybody online who would like to speak on the matter?
Mayor Snook, I see no hands raised.
All right. So we can close the public hearing. Then question is, are we ready at that point for a motion?
Well, I'll move for approval of the proposal presented by Ms. Hamel.
I second that.
Any discussion, councilors? Ms. Thomas, I guess we need a vote.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Pinkston?
Yes.
Mayor Snook?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wade?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to nothing. And that was a one reading only. So, next item, public hearing, land acquisition for park and trail use with Virginia Outdoors Foundation grant funding. Chris Jensen, are you here?
Yes, good, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item tonight is only a public hearing in advance of a future agenda item. The Parks Department's been working diligently over the past few decades to acquire pieces of property to stitch together a trail network for the comprehensive plan. We've been discussing this particular acquisition. It's on the west end of McIntyre Park, very near where the Whale Tail used to stand. It brings the 250 bypass trail from the YMCA area towards Hydraulic Road. So we have a property owner that we've been negotiating with, and we have a granting agency, the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, that's providing the funding, which has already been appropriated. The public hearing tonight is to ensure that we get public input on the approval of the grant and the purchase, which would then trigger the $3 per real estate deed transaction that you see in your memo there. This is something nearly every locality in the Commonwealth does. We are one of the few that has not yet approved that because this is our first use of Virginia Outdoors Foundation money in the city. It would trigger that. We did spoke, we did speak to Lizelle Dogger at the Circuit Court. She said she's fine with it. In fact, she refunds a lot of money because people are so used to paying that everywhere else that they pay it to us anyway, just out of habit. So tonight is simply a public hearing to get input, and we will be coming back on a two-reading piece to then put the easement on the city property once we can close on the property. We have some paperwork left to do to actually get to closing before we bring that back to you to put the easement on it and finalize the deal. So tonight's action is a public hearing only. I don't believe there's a council item, but we need to have a public hearing to move this forward.
Thank you. Do I have any questions of him, or do we want to go straight to the public hearing first? Anybody have any questions? Okay. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on this matter? No one in person. Is there anybody online who would like to speak on the matter?
Mayor Snook, I currently see one hand raised. Rex Linville?
All right.
Rex, you are on with counsel.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Rex Linville with the Piedmont Environmental Council. For the past 50 years, PEC has worked with the city of Charlottesville, Albemarle County, and other localities throughout our service area to promote smart regional planning, acquire parklands, and to protect the air, water, and natural resources on which we all depend. The Virginia Outdoors Foundation is one of our main partners in these efforts, and they have a significant positive track record in the region. Just in the past year or so, funding and staff expertise from DOF has been indispensable in the creation of the city's Hayward Community Forest, the forthcoming extension of the Old Mills Trail along the Ravanna River in Albemarle County, and the Fifeville Trail, which connects Tonsla Park to Greenstone on Fifth and the surrounding neighborhoods. Like those other projects, the acquisition you're reviewing tonight is significant because of its location and its impact. It is a crucial link in the multi-year effort to create a shared-use path that will connect McIntyre Park, YMCA, and CHS to Hydraulic Road. This parcel is also a vital part of a larger four-mile loop that will connect these public resources to Mickey Drive, the Greenbrier neighborhood, and the John Warner Parkway. This parkland acquisition is a good deal for the people of Charlottesville, and I hope you will accept it. This land sits right at the heart of the Charlottesville and Albemarle combined urban area. The trail will help connect residents of all ages to jobs, schools, recreation, and of course, everyday access to nature. It does so in a creative way that promotes health, improves quality of life, and protects the environment, all without impacting the city's budget. The staff report also focuses on the deed recordation fee that you heard Chris just mention. This fee was created by the General Assembly, which is automatically triggered when VOF holds a property interest in a locality. This fee is already in place in the vast majority of counties and cities across the Commonwealth, and the revenue generated from this fee will help fund more projects just like this one, more projects just like the Tonsla Park project, and more projects just like the city's Hayward Community Forest. I encourage you to move forward with this excellent parkland acquisition. And I applaud the efforts of your staff, Chris Jensen, for making this work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right, so we can close this public hearing. Counselors, any questions for anybody?
So no vote is required on this tonight at all?
Correct.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. Perhaps Mr. Jensen can answer for me, or somebody. Do I take it that the $3, once it starts getting collected? I mean, who does that actually go to?
As I understand it, goes to the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. I don't know if that's directly or through the Commonwealth coffers. We can get that information to you before we bring this back to you.
Well, and I guess what I'm wondering is, the amount that we're talking about spending on this one easement is, what, I saw somewhere $50,000? I don't know if that's an actual number being, or $42,000, I guess. That $3 per deed, that money would be recouped fairly quickly in Charlottesville, it would seem to me. That's basically 14,000 deeds, which I'm guessing is probably a couple of years' worth of deeds. Does this money get segregated in some way for Charlottesville's benefit, or it just goes into the coffers of VOF generally?
Again, I'd have to ask, so far, the money they've given us for projects has to have come from other localities because we're not currently a contributor. We have been a receiver. So my guess, it's a Commonwealth-wide fund, but again, we can get that into...
But if we've already been receiving funds, why have we not had the $3 tax triggered yet?
We have not placed any land within the city limits under a VOF easement. The Hayward Forest is outside of the city, and the Tonsla Project that Rex mentioned was a grant to a local nonprofit, not the city. So this is the first that technically meets the threshold.
Okay. Okay, well, those are just some sort of basic background questions. I don't have any other questions about either the program or the proposal at this point. I guess it's a little premature to be talking about the proposal yet. Any other questions, or anybody? Well, then, this item will come back to council for a vote at some point, but not tonight. Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you. We'll see you soon.
Next item on the agenda, Aaron Attack to talk about the CDBG funding and the annual action plan. Aaron?
Mayor Snook, just before Aaron gives the watch you through the agenda item, I do have home CDBG next steps to try to outline for council and the public. Just because there has been some recent concerns about what actions we were going to take, we want to just kind of review those real quickly with you.
Great, thank you.
The timing is tasked for FY '21 has come in from head all clear. The timing is tasked for FY21 has come in from HUD All Clear, so that's positive for us. We're happy to have that information. We continue to work hard to highlight any conflicts that may bring a challenge to being able to maintain that for FY22 and years going forward. Tonight, you're going to consider the annual action plan for FY22, '23. But before we hear that, I just want to give you a little bit more about what steps we are actually working on as it relates to some of the various concerns that came up in the past few weeks. Staff will not be proposing any changes to the citizen engagement plan. We're going to allow that to continue as it is and work harder to make sure that we can bring more residents to the table. Staff will no longer request that the task force be changed to staff advisory. Instead, we're going to focus on identifying income-eligible participants to ensure that the diverse voice is always available. There was some reference to compensating low-income individuals to serve. That is not an eligible activity under CDBG. We take no position on that matter, as we believe that council needs to consider that and determine if there's a source that you would like to provide to remedy the concern of individuals who are low-income being unable to participate. But in the meantime, we will continue to work with FAR and CRHA and other organizations that work with low-income programs to try to help recruit candidates for the task force. And then we'll also bring back to you the opportunity to consider compensating individuals for their service. Staff is not going to recommend priority neighborhoods going forward. We believe that there's been significant demographic changes that prevent that from being an effective manner for which we consider home and CDBG dollars. Instead, we will continue to work to identify projects that prioritize investment in those areas for the targeted low-income population to benefit from. But what we're going to, what we will do is bring forth those options for you when you do your council priority setting work in September. The CAPA report will come to you in August. That's our report on the closeout of all previous work. And then we will begin our next five-year plan, the consolidated plan, in September. That report will be due to HUD in May. It'll be a great opportunity to connect community on identifying needs, priorities, and requests for various interventions. So we'll continue to figure out different ways that we can, in this day of COVID, still being something to contend with, to figure out how to do some public engagement opportunities to reach additional individuals and to work with other departments within the city government. So I'm going to pause there, let Ms. Attack take you through the agenda item, and then I'll come back at the end of her presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. So as an entitlement community, the city receives grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development each year. We receive two types of grants, the CDBG and the home. For fiscal year 2022, the CDBG program has an estimated total of $433,471. And for the home program, we have an estimated total of $84,576.88. We don't know the exact entitlement grant right now until hopefully later this month or in June, when HUD sends out the grant awards to the city. Right now, we're working with last year's totals. On September 21, 2021, city council set priorities for fiscal year 2022 for the CDBG and home program, which included prioritizing access to affordable housing, workforce development, micro-enterprise assistance, access to quality childcare, homeowner rehabilitation, and down payment assistance. This year's requests for proposals were based on city council's CDBG and home priorities, the 2018 to 2022 consolidated CDBG and home plan, and HUD's CDBG and home national priorities. It's important to remember that all RFPs went through an extensive review by the CDBG and home task force and the Planning Commission as a result of that competitive RFP process. Today's discussion will focus on the following areas that the CDBG and home task force reviewed as a result of that competitive RFP process, public services, economic development, housing, and the 2022 action plan. Under the competitive RFP process, all applicants were required to undergo a technical assistance meeting with the grants coordinator prior to submitting an application into the city. During these sessions, applicants were able to meet with me, walk through the grant requirements, and talk about their potential CDBG and home programs. For the home program, I met with a total of six interested applicants. And for the CDBG program, I met with a total of 11 interested applicants. We ended up receiving two applications submitted under the home program and six applications submitted under the CDBG program, which are all included in your packet today. This year, new restrictions were imposed in the RFPs were with regards to timeliness and having shovel-ready projects. Anyone who did not have a shovel-ready activity or who had outstanding balances with current CDBG and home funds were considered ineligible to apply. This was shared with the CDBG and home task force prior to application deliberation. As for the action plan, each year, the city of Charlottesville and the Regional Home Consortium assess local housing and community development needs in the region and adopt a strategic action plan to meet those needs. Then localities are required to submit an annual action plan that details goals and specific activities to be carried out for the upcoming program year. This action plan ties back to the five-year 2018 to 2022 consolidated plan and begins from July 1st and ends June 30th, 2023. No funds can be accessed or spent until the start of that program year. This document serves as the city's application to HUD for CDBG and the TJPDC's, TJPDC's application for home funds, because they administer and manage the home funding for the region. The action plan is due in its final form to HUD on June 15th. The draft action plan that you have before you today is a working document. Comments that we received tonight from the public hearing today and data that council recommends for inclusion will be incorporated into the final document. And comments that we received from TJPDC's public hearing, which were none, were included into the action plan. The draft action plan was advertised for over 30 days via the Daily Progress and was distributed with the housing directors via regional partners. All comments were also incorporated into the draft, as you see before today. During the deliberation process, the CDBG and home task force recommended the following public services, housing and economic development activities for funding, which were later approved by Planning Commission for City Council approval on April 12, which we'll talk about today. I'm now going to turn it over to Deputy City Manager Sam Sanders, who will walk you through the following staff recommendations for the annual action plan.
So the staff recommendation would be to approve a home award of $105,721.10 for LEAP. In addition to that, we are also recommending approval for the, the group of CDBG projects that are identified, community investment collaborative micro-enterprise scholarships for $25,000. LEAP workforce development, $30,130. FAR resident-involved redevelopment, $37,510.32. LVC A workforce tutoring, $27,510.32. LEAP solar maintenance, $40,250. And administrative and planning, $86,694.20. That is also what we're recommending approval for. We are actually not recommending approval for the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood sidewalk project. It is $186,376.16. The reason for that recommendation to not approve is because we have had historic issues with being able to deliver complicated sidewalk projects through the home, through the CDBG program. As we have talked about more recently, we have had difficulty being able to get those to meet our timeliness obligation to HUD. We foresee this being yet another example of why we would be in a timeliness crunch in a matter of a very short period of time of trying to deliver this particular project. It is not an indication that we do not support the idea that sidewalks are necessary and important for the residents in that neighborhood. We just believe that there is a better approach that we should take in adding this sidewalk project to the CIP, using other resources and not tying up CDBG funds, and therefore putting us in, in a place to not meet our timeliness obligation. So with that, Erin, did I miss anything?
Nope, you got it.
Great. If there are any questions, we were going to take those at this time.
Well, first, first question I have, maybe I'm just not understanding what you all did or didn't do. You've got $186,376.16 for the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood, which you said was the amount that was to have been going to the sidewalk that you're not recommending doing. Do we have a, is there a plan that I'm just not seeing for that $186,000 here?
Sorry, that, that is, if you were to not approve that item, that $186,376.16 would go back into an available pot for us to then put out in the form of another RFP. There still remains a little over $33,000 that was not allocated by the task force when they met, based on the number of projects that arrived. So we would have a little over $200,000 that we would be able to put back out in the form of RFP for organizations to respond to.
And do you know, like, a rough timeline for what that RFP process would be? And to be clear, I think for multiple reasons, both the timeliness issues and I think the kind of projects I think we should be prioritizing. I think opening that back up and not having it go to the sidewalk project, I view as a positive thing.
Erin, would you like to say how soon you could get an RFP? I don't want to commit you, because I would be ready to say by the end of the week.
I could put it out towards the end of the month. I mean, the RFP process is about two to three months. But I could put it out towards the end of the month.
And that would be advertising the opportunity and allowing individuals the opportunity to prepare and respond, and put it back into us to take through our process.
And thank you, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious to get just even general sense of timeline.
Okay. If, maybe if there are any other clarifying questions we can take now, or if not, then we can just move on, get any public comment that, that folks may want to make, and then we can return to the, to the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, is there, there's nobody here, Mr. Sales? Do you want to come and say something for us?
Yes, please.
Yes, we're opening the public hearing.
Good evening, everyone. Plea for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to come out in front of you all and second what Deputy City Manager Sanders said about the recommendation of not funding the sidewalk project. If you go back the last few years where you all had to reallocate money, it was because of sidewalk projects. And so I think that is a great recommendation. I do think the sidewalk project needs to happen. I just don't think it needs to happen through CDBG money. It's restrictions and timeliness that needs to, you need to meet the timeliness in order to keep, to continue to receive the money. And there's other options where the money could be spent. In that community, from other residents, there are other recommendations that were on the table, and I think if you open it up, you may even get some other recommendations from other organizations that want to do work in the Ridge Street community. I also support all the other recommendations for funding. All of the recommendations are good recommendations, good programs, and I think it's a good way to have, to spend CDBG money. I do want to point out that it would be nice to have a little more robust community engagement process where the residents in the community are actually pitching projects instead of nonprofits pitching what work they would like to do in a community. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Sales. So do we have anybody online who wants to comment?
I see one raised hand. Joy Johnson?
All right.
Joy, you're on with counsel.
Good afternoon. I just want to say that I thanks for listening to some of the concerns we had about CBDG process. Thank you, Sam, and the staff. I do want to ask, the, we sent a presentation to you all, I'm pretty sure Mr. Sales sent a presentation to you all, where the students did a research on CBDG money, and that I think is somewhere in California, who has a process that seems to work well. Just want to remind you of that. So that's my only comment for right now on CBDG.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else?
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right, so we can close the public hearing portion here. Counsel, any further discussion?
I really don't know, having, you know, I just had a comment, and I like the approach that we're taking now that we're not designating neighborhoods because they're just changing so much. I mean, every neighborhood now is, you know, just, you know, had some level of gentrification or something that is hard to say completely. And the approach was the sidewalk. It's just, you know, working and doing planning for many years. There's always some type of hiccup with it, with those projects, whether it's a utility easement or something that can just delay it. And delay is something that HUD doesn't want. And I understand that, because there's other localities that could be using those, those funds if we, if, you know, one locality is not using it. So I like the direction. I appreciate staff working on this, Erin and Sam really kind of taking the lead, so thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, as a neophyte to this, this whole process of CDBG and the home funding, sort of observing it from the sides in the conversations that I've had with Deputy City Manager Sanders and others, it does feel like we're turning this particular initiative in, in good ways, positive ways. I'm glad to hear and observe the sort of people coming together and supporting one another in terms of trying to find the best, the best way to move this process forward. So that's good to hear, good to observe, and I look forward to the good work ahead.
And likewise, just echo, thank you to Mr. Sales, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Edwards with FAR for continuing to raise this issue. And thank you to staff for listening and adjusting and really taking the time to hear their concerns and figure out, you know, how we can move forward constructively. The only question I have is just was, so just getting a sense of the timeline in terms of some of these changes that you had brought up and, and are in that report that was presented by the students. Do I hear, like, September is sort of the timeline for when we'll be discussing and making decisions related to that, or was I, did I misinterpret that?
No, that's correct. It'd be like a two-to-three-month RFP process.
Okay. But that's, that's pretty much the only question I had.
Okay, so if we approve and this, and send it on to the second vote, a second reading and vote next time, the 186,376.16 is still dedicated to the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood, but not to a sidewalk. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah.
And that's what it seems to be on page 75. I just want to be clear that that's, that's the intent. Okay.
And are we taking any votes tonight?
No.
Okay.
Is there agreement to move these resolutions together to the June 6th consent agenda for a second reading and a vote?
What about item C where it says just one reading?
We would move them all at that point. I mean, there's no point in voting on two of them.
That's fine, yeah. Yeah, it's just me trying to understand. Yeah, I'm good with moving them to the consent agenda.
Yep. Michael?
Yes.
Sina? How do you feel about it? You're cool with it? Okay. I see the thumbs up.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll move it to the second, to the June 6th consent agenda for a second reading and vote. Next item, 12. Appropriating a grant of public funds for housing assistance to low and moderate-income homeowners within the city of Charlottesville. Todd Divers, introduce the item. There will not be a vote on it tonight. It's a first of second, a first of two readings. Mr. Divers?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I, I was hoping we were only going to get one reading on that, but I guess two is what we'll have to do. So yeah, I'm bringing chat back to you. This is what I would normally do this time of year. We got kind of thrown for a loop when, I guess it was pointed out that the way we were running the chat program was not entirely kosher. So we've kind of scrambled to put together a program that I think is going to get us close to what we were doing. We can't, you know, this, this, instead of running this under the charter provisions, we're now going to be doing this under the social services provision of the code. The, the Director of Social Services, in her capacity as the local social services board, will be the official administrator of this program, though I will be working in a, on a a cooperative agreement with her and will still be effectively managing the program the way we always have. Since we're no longer under the restrictions of the, of the charter provisions that had, you know, some things to say about home value limits and things like that, we can adjust some of the parameters, which I know folks have been, have been wanting to do for a long time. So we're going to go ahead and do that. This year, we're going to increase the home value threshold to $420,000. The basis for that is that is the, the average assessed value of an improved residential parcel in the city of Charlottesville. And so, you know, we, that was, that was kind of where we picked it. We're going to go ahead and increase the income threshold to 60,000, which is, according to the, when I last checked, that was the average AMI for Charlottesville. And so, you know, going forward, I'm hoping that those, those two criteria can kind of, can stabilize and then, you know, we can look at where they are each year, and then that will inform the parameters of the program. As far as the tiers go, we can no longer, we, we won't be running this as a percentage of the real estate tax bill. This is a, this is a grant program. This is a grant for needy folks. And the way that we are defining that is folks who make less than $60,000 a year and who own a home in the city of Charlottesville. So the, the tiers that we're putting forward, if a, if a homeowner, if the combined household income of a homeowner is $35,000 or less, they are eligible for a grant in the amount of $2,500. If the income threshold falls between 35,000 and 45,000, they'll be eligible for a $2,000 grant. If the income falls between 45 and 55, they'll qualify for a $1,500 grant. And if their income falls between 55 and 60, they'll qualify for a $1,000 grant. We think, you know, we think by raising the, the home value and raising the income, we can maybe pick up about 100 more people than we would have otherwise. So, you know, folks may not get quite what they're, we're going to get before, but we think, you know, more folks will get something, and this will help, help a lot of folks. If you have questions, just, just hit me and, and otherwise, we're gonna, we're gonna get rolling on this. We've got to get some forms updated. We got to get some letters in the mail and get ready to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Divers. Any questions or comments from counsel?
Question, you know, I know in our budget, we allocated about a million dollars to combine the chat program with the real estate relief for the elderly and disabled. My understanding is that would no longer really be feasible, given how much this program is changing. Do we know, you know, what will, will come of that money and, and on what, what would be the timeline for when we would reallocate that? Because what comes to my mind is if that money can't be used, could we put it towards expanding the amount of relief or the number of people who can receive relief through this change to chat?
You're correct. We won't be able to make, to merge the programs this year. And so there will be some money left over that we had kind of counted on to, to, to make that merger because there was going to be some overlap the way the programs fell in the year. So that's not going to happen. Now, we are going to spend, you know, we're not, it, it's not all going to be available because we are increasing the home value threshold and increasing the lit, the, the income limit. So that's going to eat up some of it. As far as when it's available and what you're going to do with it, I see Ms. Hammel was on here.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we won't know what the final outcome is until after Commissioner Divers is done with all of that, which would be December, correct?
That's correct.
Of 2022?
Correct.
Yeah. So it would be January or February before we would actually know what the extra may be. And then count, at that point, we could come back to counsel and you could reappropriate it for something else.
I guess I could have answered that.
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, so by tying this to, to the AMI of the area and also to the median home value of the area, we're going to start hopefully so it will be able to grow and change and fluctuate with our community?
I, I would hope that we can, as those numbers change year to year, you know, then we can have a systematic way of adjusting the program year to year. You know, as the AMI changes, you know, we can change the, the parameter of this program. As the average home value, average assessed value of residential parcel changes, we can adjust that as well. Rather than doing a, a piecemeal kind of poke and tease and, and rearrange every year, I, I think it would be, I know it'd be a lot easier on my nerves if I had some basis to kind of stabilize that process.
Is there also going to be a factor then to stabilize the increase necessary in amount?
Amounts?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to get to that. I haven't gotten that far down the road.
You have done a miracle in the period of time that you've had to work on this, and the fact that we're going to probably get this out in time to help people this year is really wonderful, Todd, and thank you.
Sure. Lisa Robertson knows, gets a lot of credit for this too.
Lisa, you're awesome. I, I just, I just want to bring this up so that we're thinking about in the future because I like the idea of creating a system that rolls and changes as our community needs change.
I do too.
And a couple more questions. You had mentioned about 100 more people will be able to qualify under the changes you discussed. You know, is there an estimate of like an exact number at this point, or is that really up in the air, just about, you know, how it rolls out once the changes are made?
That, that is what my dad used to call a SWAG, which stands for a scientific wild, you know what, guess. It's, it's a pretty good guess, I think, but it's, it's an estimate.
And then, maybe this is the same situation where we just can't really know, but you know, will, will the average person, you know, obviously some people see changes, some people will get a little bit more than they did before, some people get a little bit less, and obviously overall, more people will be able to qualify. So I think on the whole, it's a positive thing. But we have any sense about, you know, what those changes look like, you know, at what AMI level might people get a little bit more than they did before, or is again, that just going to be very unpredictable?
Well, I'm, we're, we're trying to give sort of the average amount that we were projecting to give for each of those tiers. So I, I, you know, as we were working on this, I had in my head that I wanted a tier from zero to 35 and 40, 35 to 45 and 45 to 55, and 55 to 60. And, and we looked at, at, kind of laid it out and ran the numbers on how much we thought we were going to give out in each of those tiers. And the average amount that we were going to give out is roughly what we're giving out. Now, you know, previously, if you had been in the zero to 35 tier, you would have gotten 100% relief. Well, you're going to get $2,500 now. So if your tax bill's less than $2,500, you're going to get a little more. If your tax bill's more than $2,500, you're going to get something less. And that's going to be somewhat true through all the tiers. I haven't teased it out much beyond that, though. I hope that answers your question.
No, it does, and I think it's just going to be, have to be something that we very closely watch and figure out how we adjust going forward. And the final thing I would just comment is obviously the benefit of this is even though there's some, I think there's going to be some rough edges rolling it out around things like that, I think the benefit is we've clearly seen, despite expanding the amount of subsidy over the past several years, the number of people participating in CHAP has declined. And I think this reverses that and allows us long-term, like you said, to be able to tie it to either AMI or median household value. In other words, to continue to expand the program so as assessments continue to rise, people aren't just kicked out, which I think was our fundamental problem, is that we could have, you know, expand the subsidy level substantially, but that hard limit every single year would just kick more and more people out.
Yeah.
And so I think this long-term provides us a lot more power to make this a more expansive tool, to make our real estate tax more progressive. But we're just going to have to really closely watch it and adjust as, as the changes first get made.
Remember, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not an exemption program, it's a grant.
Right.
And so, and I'll come back every year, you know, if I know what those parameters are, I can come back every year and I can give you an estimate of what it's going to cost. If I know to adjust the home value and I know to adjust the income limit, you still got to pay for it. And that's, you know, that's going to change every year.
One question, I guess I've got, you have referred occasionally to the average value of the house. We have tended to refer to the median value of the house. Statisticians will know that those two are not the same. What is the plan? Median?
Average. It, I, I ran, we ran the average.
So if there's a $5 million house out there, that's bringing the average way up. Whereas if we were looking at a median, the five, that $5 million house only counts for one.
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Okay, so that is intended to be an average, not a median?
That's, that's, that's what we ran.
Okay.
There's not a lot of those out there. And there's also some, some pretty low valued ones as well. I mean, it cuts both ways.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, did you see Ms. Robertson's note?
No. Which note?
Two readings are required per city code. The requirement can't be waived for any appropriation. However, if we want to speed up the approval, we could do the second reading on May 25 prior to starting the joint meeting with the planning commission.
It'd be awesome.
That's in the chat in the Zoom.
Okay, so we could do, oh, I, I haven't, I haven't seen that.
That seems perfectly logical to me.
So we would do, tonight would count as the first reading, and then on May 24th, we would have the second reading and the vote.
That's what I'm understanding from what it turns out to say.
See, I haven't gone to find that, so let's see. Assuming that is a correct statement of things, and I assume it is, then the question, if there are no more question or comments from counsel, would there be an agreement to move the resolutions, the resolution here to the June, to the May 24th agenda for the second reading and vote?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Okay. Sina is good with that? See the thumbs up? Okay? Sounds like a plan.
Thank you all.
Todd, if that'll help you get a little bit, move it a little bit faster, hey?
Yep, I appreciate it. We need to get moving. Thank you.
And Mr. Divers, as was said earlier, thank you all for pulling this together so quickly. I know that you've got, you've had a lot on your plate, put it mildly.
And, and I think, we should note that it was only six weeks ago that this whole issue just sort of got dumped into everybody's laps, and the, all of the people who need to work on this have worked hard, fast, accurately, well. And I think we, I would say, I'm proud of you all. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll talk about it some more in a couple of weeks.
All right.
One week, one week. Yeah. Okay. There are no items of general business for discussion. Mr. City Manager, anything you want to bring up for us?
Nope.
Not at this time.
I have something.
What's that?
I have a few things that I was asked to read.
Okay.
Are, are we at the general business?
We are at general business.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I should have read these before. Blame, blame my spaciness.
No problem.
So first announcement, last week was transportation week, and we'd like to thank the transit and pupil drivers and staff that form our Charlottesville area transit. As we know, they're amazing. They, they have done amazing work throughout this pandemic as well and kept our buses and kept our kids going back and forth to school. So thank you. Takes more than a week to thank them. This week is EMS week, and we thank our men and women who provide our critical service to our community. We include cars in extending our appreciation, as well as Charlottesville Fire Department and all of our EMS personnel in the area. Thank you, and again, COVID has been incredibly hard, and we appreciate you showing up every single day. And this is also Public Works Week, and we thank the fine people who work hard every day to serve our community of Charlottesville all year, especially during the snow season and flooding season too. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, Counselor McGill. I just want to mention one other thing that after the discussion of 800 Franklin Street, I can tell you that city staff is already, even during this meeting, starting to get to work on the issue and had some communication from Deputy City Manager Ashley Marshall, just to say that they're going to be getting together on this, right, as soon as the meeting is over and staff is activated to ensure that the community, that we, to ensure to the community that we are not, not ignoring the issue. The last item is any final speaking opportunity for members of the public. Speakers have the three minutes. You may join the speaker queue by selecting the raise hand option in the Zoom webinar or by pressing star nine if you have joined by phone. Or if, standing in line in front of the microphone here, we only have one member of the public here, and we can alternate between in-person and then virtual speakers. So, Mr. Sales, you're standing up again. Is that, would you like to come speak to us?
Yes. I wanted to address Ms. Khan's comments about the voucher program.
Thank you.
So we did receive 15 emergency housing vouchers. We partner with TJAC, the Continuum Care for the Charlottesville area. We have MOU with them where they are in charge of assisting us with finding clients that qualify for the voucher. So they do the initial intake and then we do the follow-up lease-up and getting the individual needs, services they need. So we received additional funds to assist with, like purchasing furniture, paying security deposits, utility connection fees, moving expenses, really almost anything, and it's like the first time HUD has ever done this and attached it with a voucher. And so we have leased up seven of those vouchers. We have issued all 15. Some did come back. One is awaiting lease, lease agreement, one expired, one that we're currently, I don't have an update on one, and five are still searching for housing out of the 15. So there's one that will be reissued. We're going through our waitlist to see who actually qualifies, if we have someone on our waitlist qualify, or it's TJAC waiting on them to send us someone or referral. On the regular voucher program, which is a much larger program in the city, we currently have 437 vouchers leased up out of a voucher capacity of 624. That has increased significantly. We had about $700,000 additional in funding this year, which is the most we've ever received because we leased up 100 additional vouchers last year. So you lease up more vouchers, they give you more money. And so we have a plan to issue another 75 vouchers within the next three months, that's 25 vouchers a month, to get us to the 80 additional vouchers they believe we can lease up. There is going to be some attrition there, and CRJ does plan on project basing 24 vouchers at South First Street Phase 1 when it is completed at the end of this year. We have only had 10 families return their voucher due to them not being able to find a unit. Due to COVID-19, there, the search period has been extended. Typically, it's 90 days with one, with, it's 60 days with two extensions to go no more than 120. We've given families 120 days straight as soon as they receive their voucher, and then gave them an option to do one extension for another 30 days, so up to 150 days to search. And so that is way more than what is typically allowed. Our voucher success rate hasn't improved much, but our lease-up rate has improved a lot. And so we are now leasing up families within two and a half months instead of four months when I first got here. A majority of our families didn't get leased up until the 120 to 150 days. Now it's a lot faster. A couple of things have played into that. We had some landlord incentive programs where we provided an additional bonus to landlords who leased up a new unit with us. And so that played a little factor in it. And we also had some security deposit assistance. So families who typically didn't have the, the funding to lease up a new unit, we had some security deposit assistance that was there to provide them a grant that went straight to the landlord. I think that's all I have. If there are any more ques, oh, one more thing, sorry. The CISRAP program, a The CISRAP program, I know you all did fund that again this year. We have gone through the entire waitlist, so that waitlist will be opening up again. And so that will be an opportunity for the individuals that are unhoused now to get on that waitlist and get assistance relatively quickly. The HTV waitlist is over 900 families, so it's a very long waitlist. We don't use a lottery system. Sorry, I'm trying to remember all comments. We don't use a lottery system. We use the waitlist. We advertised in the beginning of 2021 to open up our waitlist. We have one preference, which is local, live or work in the city of Charlottesville. We don't have the homeless preference anymore. That was removed, I want to say in October, November of 2020. And it was removed so we could do the project basing of vouchers. And so when we removed it, it allowed us to move public housing residents to the top of that list because they are going to be displaced through redevelopment. So like Crescent Halls, when we had to move all those families out, one way to get those families out was giving them a voucher. That was possible because we didn't have that preference in there for the homelessness. Because secondly, well, more than secondly, everyone at Crescent Halls lives in the city of Charlottesville, so it allowed us to move them up to the top. And that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Sales. Is there anybody online who would like to speak to council at this point?
We just had a hand go up. Let's see, Joy Johnson. Joy, you're back on with council.
Good afternoon again. As you know, I advocate for, I've been advocating for affordable housing now for some time when, you know, people felt like, you know, it's not affecting me. But right now in 2022, it's affecting a lot of people. And Mr. Sales just explained to you about more vouchers that is going to be on the street. But there is something going on with landlords who are jacking the rents up. They're increasing the rents to the point where it's taking people a much longer time to find a unit, or they have to settle for a unit that are just terrible. I think there has to be a conversation in this town about true affordable, affordable housing. And most of the units that are going up, the brand new ones who are gentrifying the neighborhoods, most people with a voucher cannot find affordability in those units. So I, I urge you all, I'm committed, Joy Johnson is committed until, you know, I'm not here anymore, to fight for more affordable housing. I would hope this council will be also committed to making sure we have true affordable housing. The, the, and I can never think of the name of that place, but the Crossins is a success. It had taken some people off the street. They have services. I think we should be doing some more SROs. I know in the planning with CRHA, we're talking about SROs. Some people don't want a, want a full one bedroom because of whatever issue. A one bedroom is a bit much, but if they just want an efficiency, and that's what the Crossins is in. So I think this council needs to be committed to looking at what's going on with landlord and jacking up the rent so that people can afford it. Again, thank you to Sam and the staff about the CBDG, and that's all I have to say. Have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Mayor Snook, I see no additional hands.
All right, so we will close the community matters, and I've got nothing else on the agenda except adjournment. We're adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.